Just wanted to let the citizens know that this call is being recorded. Ms. Ferguson, do you mind, pray, give them the invocation, please?
Father God, we thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made. We shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for allowing us to come together again tonight to do the business of the city. We ask, Father God, that your presence, your wisdom, knowledge, and your counsel and peace be among us. On this evening, we ask that you would allow us to work fervently and effectively to go get to this budget on tonight. We ask for your blessings for the citizens, the employees of the city, for the council, mayor, and all who's on the meeting tonight. We thank you and give your name to praise and the glory. Amen.
Amen. Roll call. Now we'll do the roll call. Mr. Councilman Harry?
Here.
Councilman Hairston?
Present.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Here.
And Councilman Curtis is here. Councilman Guleon is, will not be able to attend today's meeting. So we have the agenda that was sent out to the citizens yesterday that have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring up the same issue I brought up at Tuesday's meeting that I think that we're not following proper protocol according to the charter, section 806, that says that once the public hearing is concluded, that that budget at that public hearing will be either passed by the council or amended. I think that's what the, that's the budget that we should have in front of us, in front of us tonight. So my same protest is Tuesday.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Any other discussion? Okay. Well, we can vote to adopt.
I'm sorry, Council President, I'm sorry. I thought I saw something earlier pertaining to a discussion. No, just go ahead.
No.
No, I don't think that, I don't think, now that I think about it, when I think about what I read, I don't think that that's for this meeting, that's for another work session.
Okay. Councilwoman Fareed? What's, I know I spoke with you earlier, was there something that you wanted to add to the agenda?
Yes, just an update on the city's website.
Okay, alright. We can add that and do it first and still won't take long to do that.
Okay.
And we can vote on the agenda. Councilman Harry? Councilman Hairston?
Upstate.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis is a yes. So we have four yeses. I'm sorry, do I have to go back to the upstate? No, no, I don't. Four yeses, one abstain, one no. So we'll move forward with the agenda. And we'll start first with Councilman Fareed.
Good evening, everyone. As some of you may recall from the previous council, former Councilwoman Eaton was leading the website committee for which I was a committee member. A number of advancements were made with that committee prior to the swearing in of the new council. But there are still some actions to be completed at this time, including approval of the site map, which was already created by the website committee and socialized with the vendor revised. And so there's just pending approval of that site map in order to move forward. And what the site map is, is when you go on the website and you see the headers, so it'll say like departments, you know, our city, the different sections, that's what the site map is. It's showing, okay, when you click on our government, for example, it will show these different menus. So the site map is not the actual content, it's just what the layout of the website will be, and it's very similar to what we have now. So that needs to be approved and moved forward. That approval, it's not a council approval that is required for that, but I did want to bring it forward so everyone was aware before approving that site map. Once that site map is approved, we can begin to develop the content that will go on those different pages. So over this summer, we would like to have some engagement from citizens.
David.
Sorry.
And you.
Okay, we would like to have engagement from citizens to participate in that website committee to help build out the content for those different pages on the website. So we're looking for volunteers for that. We'll send out a formal request for that. And then the website will be built, but we won't go live until the council has reviewed all the pages, including the content, and we've agreed that it's good to go. And then we'll switch from the current website to that new layout. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, last time we got through the budget all the way up, and we're starting on page twenty-six, which is public safety. I am going to share my screen so the citizens can follow along where we are. And I will let Mr. Stewart lead us in the budget if you have any questions. Mr. Chief O'Donnell, if we have any questions for him, he's here. Mayor Estes, are you in attendance today? Don't see. No, I see iPhone, but that person is not, so, okay. Then we will start and I will share my screen. One second. Ms. Schultz, do you see the agenda or do you see the budget?
I see the public safety page.
Okay, I don't know why it's... Okay, great. I don't know why my screen's doing that, and it's actually on the other screen instead of the screen. Okay, so if we're all, you see the public safety screen, then we're on the right one. And I think I've made it big for everyone to see it. So, public safety, this is the police department. Mr. Stewart, do you want to, you know, to start us off and take us through it? Or Chief O'Donnell?
No, yes, I'll, I'll start as there isn't much. So thank you, Council President Curtis. What I would like to start off with is the comparison of this budget to the one that was originally issued in May. There are actually just one change, which was related to the retirement line. That change was due to us not including one of the officers and the new officers. But since our meeting on Tuesday made changes, that would bring us back to what the original amount was. So when we look at not this budget, but the one that is going to be corrected based on our discussion from Tuesday and today, we will see those changes. So apart from that, there are no other changes to the budget.
And when you said the, the budget, you're, you're only referencing right now public safety, correct?
On public safety, and as a matter of fact, I should say that based on the discussion as well, I have gone across the board to look on all of the other departments to ensure that we we are consistent with those numbers and with those calculations. So for social security and retirement, those numbers will be the correct number, taking into account all the individuals that work in their respective departments.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if anyone has any questions on the police or public safety, you could go ahead and ask. I should further state that there was a three percent, I think, increase for officers who were there before. Chief could, could confirm that with me, but I think there is a cost of living increase, a COLA of three percent for all who were here for this budget. Apart from that, all numbers remain the same from prior year. So if anyone has any questions, please, you could go ahead and ask now.
So I have a couple of questions on, just on that COLA. Previously, it was a line item by itself, but now it's reflected in the increase in their salaries, which I think is fine, but I think we need to make note of that because otherwise... Do you see what I'm talking about, how fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year twenty, there's a COLA officers, including the chief, for three percent, the second to last line?
Yes, and that is, that is a reasonable observation. We did that specifically to show that each of those positions will be receiving the COLA. As opposed to what was done years before, we wanted to make sure that you see the numbers that are going to be applied to their respective positions.
Right, and I think that actually is the best way to present it. So I just think we maybe need to put a footnote or something there to make that clear.
Will do, sounds good.
The, the other item is, I could not find where, you know, it's talked about in the overall summary of the budget. The administration is also investigating moving into the state retirement system and has included funds for both the study and budget. I wasn't, I, I was, I couldn't find where that was. Where is that? Are we doing that, is it one study or is it a study per kind of employee group?
For that question, I would defer to the chief. But if not, I'd love to get back to you on that. But Chief Phillips? Chief O'Donnell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We have a plan with our engineer. They are... They are drawing the police station and they are going to affix a price to it. They haven't finished that yet. But this is something that we've been, it's been an ongoing project. We've had several estimates, but no action has ever been taken.
Sorry, Chief O'Donnell, are you talking about it moved to the state retirement system or are you talking about the other funds for?
Well, I'm talking about two things. I'm talking about the police station is one.
Okay.
So we're working on that. And several years ago, we've made a formal request that we move into the state retirement system. The former treasurer was working with the state, but he never finished the project. And I think Dean, under the direction of Mr. George, has started to look into it.
So where are the funds right now? Because there should be some funds in fiscal year twenty-two for that study and for the potential increase in budget as it relates to moving to the state retirement system. I don't see that reflected.
And Chief, before you answer, is, could you, do you have your TV on or something? Could you mute that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Fareed, to, to answer your question, no. The study has not been concluded. We haven't estimated an amount, so we would not have set up a provision in the budget as yet.
Okay, so then we should correct that this first page here because it says the administration is also investigating moving into the state retirement system in fiscal year twenty-two and has included funds for both the study and budget, should the city decide to go with the state.
Okay, will do, I see us.
Okay, and then, so Chief, you're, you're saying that there's also a need to improve the police department, the building?
Yes, for the last, well, I came there in two thousand and eight and we did plans for a police department. We went to the state, we went to the county, and that project never came to fruition. So it came back up a couple of years ago. And the prior treasurer was given the task to contact the state and to find out how much it would cost the city to do a study to see what it would take for us to join in the state retirement system. I believe that they had re-instituted that recently.
Okay, well, that sounds like something, I don't know if it's in the capital.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
That, that's, as, as you said, should have been something that is reflected in the capital section of the, the report. If this is something that was there last year, I can tell you that some of these projects that were not completed, did not start in twenty-twenty-one, they may have been carried forward to twenty-twenty-two. So when we get to that point, we will see what the budget is saying and, and follow through on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones, I saw you here.
I think that question came up concerning the retirement fund. I think it came up in the, in the first meeting, budget meeting we had a couple of days ago. I think the human resource department person, Mrs. Schultz, was gonna check to see if she had any notes or anything from the former treasurer to answer those questions for us. Can we ask her if she, if, I think she's on here, if she found anything in the last couple of days pertaining to that?
Ms. Schultz? Ms. Schultz?
I think when she first came on, she was having audio problems.
Okay. Alright, well, maybe we can put a...
Circle back.
Yeah, pin in that and come back to it. Chief O'Donnell, you, you were also mentioning the, the estimates for the police station, correct?
Yes, I did mention that, and we did request a estimate from our engineering company, and we haven't received that yet.
Okay. Had they, I remember you saying they provided estimates before, but you wanted an updated estimate, correct?
Yeah, the last, the last full estimate we had was from ten years ago. So we're trying to upgrade the code of the station and the current price.
Okay. And as you prepared the budget, does this budget is adequate for the needs of the police department? For public safety?
Well, it's, it's adequate for the needs of public safety, other than the fact that we desperately need a new facility to work out of. We have eighteen officers, soon to have nineteen, and I believe you've seen the space we work out of.
Yes. I have, from the outside.
Well, come, come in the inside.
I, I tried, it was locked, it was locked, but I, but from the outside, I saw that it was, it was pretty small, so.
It is, it's very small, sir.
So I think we're gonna need to add it because there's nothing in the capital project section for... Nothing to be related to that, but we need, we need an estimate for...
I, I, yes, we may have to add it, but I don't want to jump from page to page right now. When we get to the capital section, we'll go through it and see what is those, what are those line items to settle on, right? Yes.
Fair enough. Councilman Jones?
Yes, there was also an issue when I first came aboard the council concerning some public safety money that we were supposed to be getting from D.R. Horton, I think, from, from the Woodmore Town Center project. And that was money that was to, that they were gonna use to build a police station. Were we ever able to identify where that money went, Chief O'Donnell?
That money all went to the county.
It went to the county, so how, how did it, how did that happen?
It was a public safety impact fee that was paid to the county.
Was it meant for the city or was it meant for?
Well, I believe it was meant to split because we have a responsibility for the Woodmore Town Center, the shopping area and the residential area. But we had our attorneys look into that, and they were never able to recover any money.
You know how much that was?
It was a lot. I don't know the exact figure, sir.
I heard the figure was two million.
Could be close to that, yes, ma'am.
Maybe we can talk to a representative from the county and pull up, so is this in writing, Ms. Jones, the agreement with D.R. Horton to build a police station in Glen Arden?
It could be.
You're mute.
I'm sorry, it wasn't necessary to build a police station, but it was just two million dollars in public safety money just to be, to be given to the city. I don't have any documentation in writing. We probably would have to go back and look at the, the DSP or some, when they initially put together the proposed plan for the Woodmore Town Center. I'm not sure if any other other council members that were on the council when, when they first started working on the project are aware of it, but we could certainly do a historical search, maybe ask one of the former council people to see if that was something that they might still have or if it was something in writing.
Councilman Harry, do you remember that?
Yes, the city's supposed to get two thousand dollars per household. When, when the development is built, the developer is required to pay six thousand per household to the county for public safety. Now, that's six thousand dollars, the city would get two thousand dollars per household, which come to, close to about two million dollars. So what we, and that's county law. So what we as a city need to do and what I've been trying to get the treasurer to do, the previous treasurer and the previous treasurers before that, is to reach out to the county and let them know we want our money because it's, it's sitting in their general fund. And what happens is when you don't, when you don't request it or try to get it, they roll it into the general fund like they did with our, our fee and lieu money for trees. So it should be about, it should be about, let's see, it should be, half of that should be there. Half of it should be there, so it's, it's there somewhere, it's just gotta, you just gotta, you just gotta fight for it.
Okay.
Is that per household at Woodmore Town Center or per household in the city?
No, per household in Woodmore Town Center because that's the requirement for new development.
Okay. And Councilman Harry, do you have the, do you know what that documentation is?
It's county law, I have to see if I can pull it back out and send it to you because that's what we gotta hold onto their feet. We gotta say, this is what was required of the county, this is what they were required to give us, this is what the law says. Where's our money? And they're gonna, they're gonna twist and turn and fight and everything else, but it's gonna have to be a battle that we have to take.
Okay, if, if you could share that document with the council, that'd be great. And then we can have our treasurer, Mr. Stewart, follow up with that and have our lawyers involved.
Alright, I'll see if I can find it.
Thank you. Alright. Is there, is there anything else? You said the biggest concern is the police station. But outside of that, you have everything you need for public safety?
Yes, the thing that we need the most. The thing that we need to do our everyday job is we need two additional vehicles, and that's in the budget.
Okay. You're breaking up, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilman Harry, can you mute your phone, please?
Oh, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Um, what is the trial board? I think you've explained this before, but...
The trial board is, and we're gonna have to revisit this, I already talked to Ms. Schultz about it. Maryland has what they call the law enforcement officer bill rights. That is slowly disappearing. It already started today. And over the first of July, the first of October, and next year, a lot of these things are gonna change. So officers had different rights. And the only way you can fire a police officer is by a trial board. So I can't fire a police officer unless he's a, he or she is a probationary officer. Once they finish their probation, they have to be fired by a trial board. Now, an officer is still gonna have to be fired by a trial board. But I have to find, or we have to find as a city, five people that are available to sit on these trial boards, and they'll make the decision of what happens to the police officer. So that takes, you know, you gotta get a lawyer to represent the city, and it gets expensive. It was twenty-five, they took it down to fifteen. Fifteen probably is not enough, but it's close.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought it was, and with all that's going on throughout the country with, you know, police departments and the way that people are expecting things to change. I thought that this was changing. police departments and the way that people are expecting things to change, I thought that this was changing and that that should be more money. So how much do you think is reasonable?
Well, right now, it's trial and error, we haven't done it yet, so 15's reasonable, and I'm sure there'd be other places in the budget where I could get money.
Okay.
For, for your special events, $10,000, do you, do you have plans associated with the $10,000? I see parades, community outreach, but are there specific plans for those community outreach?
Yes, we do, we do National Night Out every year. We're doing it this year, but not on a larger scale as we usually do it. We're gonna do it at City Hall rather than at the Rex Center. We also take a number of children. We increase it every year, we're up to like 15 or 16 now. We take them Christmas shopping, they have a private private breakfast with Santa Claus, then they go shopping, they wrap their presents, we take them to lunch and bring them back to their parents.
And then in that program, and this may begin a little bit too much into details, in that program, are there, is there any documentations kept after that to see, one, who you were able to take to Christmas shopping and follow up for those individuals, their families, so they can stay connected, or is it just? Every year we take?
They stay connected, because what happens is, after we do the event, Wegmans and Sergeant Richardson usually reach out to them and make sure that's okay throughout the year.
Okay, great.
And the kids are picked by the schools, we don't pick the kids, the schools pick them.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Chief O'Donnell or Mr. Stewart on the public safety budget?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Herron?
Public safety. Now, Mr. Stewart, you said the only thing that was different in the budget from the one that was introduced in May was the salaries, but I'm seeing difference of $21,628, which is the, which is the tasers. So that was added after the fact, and is that? I know, Chief, didn't you say we got money from Wegmans for something or another, is that it?
We got, we got $10,000 from Wegmans, and that was to buy new guns, and we will, yeah, we will approach that when the council goes back in session.
Okay, so this $21,000 is just a new purchase from?
The $21,000, we increased the number of body cameras, and we increased the number of tasers, because we've increased the number of police officers.
Okay, so do all of our, do all of our police officers carry tasers? Or just right now a certain number?
Right now, we have a certain number, we're close to everybody, but I'd like to get to the point where everybody has them.
And everybody's trained on taser usage and all of that?
Everybody is completely certified with everything they use.
All right. Mr. Stewart, the bridge that I asked for last, on Tuesday, has that been done?
I am, thanks to your question, I am in the process of doing that bridge. I will have it ready sometime next week.
Okay, well, I mean, I did it myself, so I mean, but I know there's quite a few differences than the May budget, but yeah, just get it to me when you get it to me. But I mean, I kind of figured I wasn't gonna get it tonight, so I went in and did it myself, but like I said, it's a lot of changes from the previous budget that was introduced on the floor versus the budget that we're working on right now, and I'm just trying to figure out where these changes came from and when was the decision made and who made the decision to make these changes, so, all right.
Might I ask you a question? I think, Mr. Herron, you might be looking at a different one, because I have the printout from the May 18 meeting, the budget that was attached here, so that was the budget hearing, and it does say 21,628. I don't know, this one, it has a date at the top of, like, this one where it says June 24, 21, this one says April 6, 21.
If you go to, if you go to what was sent out to the people, you go to the website, and what was sent out to the people, what was given to the people, it's a completely different budget.
Oh, okay, I would usually print them out for the meetings, and this is the full package from that date, so I don't, maybe it was updated, I don't know, but the one that I have from that date does have these amounts.
Not the one that I printed out on Wednesday. I went to the website, went to the old agenda listing for the meeting, and printed out the whole packet, and that wasn't on the one, I mean, I'm sorry, the one that came to the public hearing that I got from the executive assistant, because she sent it out to everybody. That's what was on the agenda.
She may have sent a different one, because I was, you know, I wasn't a council member at that time, I only got this off of the, off of the site.
And they must have updated that one, the one that they sent us is different than that. She sent us one in email and in a packet for that night, and that's the one I printed out, so that was the one that was advertised in a newspaper.
And, and if you don't mind me breaking in, but yes, the one that Councilwoman Fareed is actually looking at, that's the one that I have, that's the one that I'm working from, that's the one that was actually given to me by the executive assistant, so that's why I could say to you that there were no changes. You said that those numbers that you have were actually on the website. I didn't go to the website, I went back to the one that was given to me by the executive assistant, and it agrees with what Councilwoman Fareed had. That's why I could say to you that I did not see any changes.
That's not the right one, that's not the one that we had at public hearing on, the one that we had at public hearing on is the one that I sent you. That's the one we had at public hearing on, so. Because after that public hearing, there's like two more, there's three more versions after that public hearing, so they modified it a couple of times, so, but the one from the public hearing is the one that I sent you, that's the one that you sent out to us via email for that night.
I actually pulled the one that is in the binder, that's the one that I use. So it's kind of confusing now, but I look at the one you sent me and compare it to what's on the website, okay?
All right, thanks.
So what we can do for transparency is we can continue to work through this budget as a council in this work session. Mr. Stewart can make all the adjustments, and then we can repost the budget to the website, we can put it in the newspaper if necessary, so citizens can have ample time to review it, to look at it, and then we can hold a public hearing on it, so people get, so citizens can ask their questions on it, and then we can vote on it. That way, everybody gets to see it. And, Mr. Herron, what paper, I'm sorry, I'll come back to you, Councilman Jones, what paper was this?
What, the newspaper that it was put in?
Yeah.
What, Prince George's Gazette, I think that's what we use.
Prince George's Post.
Prince George's Post.
The Gazette's not in circulation any longer, except at Andrews Air Force Base.
Post, okay, thank you. Councilman Jones? I'll come back to you, Ms. Fareed.
I'm sorry, I'm just letting notify you that Ms. Schultz has corrected her audio, if you wanted to ask about the retirement, if she found anything pertaining to the retirement, the state retirement fund.
Okay, let's pin that and go to Councilman Fareed if it's on the same topic that we're talking about now.
Yeah, I was just, I put in the chat for everyone the link to the previous one that we're talking about from that meeting, May 18th, if anyone doesn't have it.
Okay, and Ms. Schultz?
Can you get me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did find the documents that were provided to the council, and I will share them with the council from Mr. Brennan, before that coming up on Tuesday. I haven't had time to look at the project, but I did find what he gave council originally regarding the regarding the state of Maryland, and talking to Leah and other entities, it takes approximately a year once we decide. And we want to look into this, changing into state for Maryland, for us to do it. There are certain requirements that have to fill out initially, that we've got to see, then the state's gonna come back and ask additional questions. If a majority of the employees are not interested, then the state's not gonna do what they need to do, they need to get quick vote boards. If everything is satisfactorily for the state initially, the documents go to their board of advisors, somebody like that, and they say, whether or not we can, those are the main bullet points that I found through talking to other components and talking to the local government. So it's not a quick turnaround, but we start this in 22, you're looking at 23 before we can initiate, because it has to take place on the following year after we initiate and solve whatever the problem is.
Okay. Ms. Schultz, so your volume was still kind of shaky, so if you could just send that to the council, that would be great. From what I heard, it takes a year, it's a lengthy process to go through the study to see if we can transition to the state program, so I did hear that, but if you can just give just the main bullet points to the council, then we could share with the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And one last question, Chief, you said that not everyone has tasers. Why is that? Is that a budgetary constraint, or is there a process to getting tasers, and what happens in the, in a case where where officer who does not have one needs one, do they have to wait for backup for someone to come with a taser?
Well, tasers were never meant for every police officer.
Okay.
However, like in DC, when I was in DC, the only ones that had tasers were like sergeants. But we don't have that many sergeants, so, but since everything came up about excessive force, I feel it's better to move towards getting everybody a taser. It's your fir, it's your first line of defense, it's less than lethal force, and so eventually, I would hope that all of our officers would have a taser, most of them have it now, there's about three or four guys that don't have them, and some of them don't want them.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Councilman Herron?
Yes, so Chief, it's not a required piece of their uniform, it's not gonna be a required piece of uniform, it's a volunteer issue?
It's not a volunteer, but like I said, some guys don't want them, but I still make them use them.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I, you know, think it's a good idea for every police officer to have it, I mean, you run in the police department.
No, what I want to do is I want to take a good look at the tasers this year, and then we're due to go to a new contract next year for both body cameras and tasers, and then update everything then.
Okay. And there's official policy on tasers and public safety?
Yes, we have a written policy. That's been approved by our legal department.
Okay, and when was that policy established?
When we got tasers, two years ago.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the public safety budget? Okay, well, we can move on to code enforcement.
So if I should take over here, for code enforcement, there was a change as well between the previous budget and this budget that we're looking at, and as I said, it's in line with the overall retirement and social security budget, in this case, this is for the social security, and it has been reverted back to what it was on the earlier budget. It's saying now 7,000, and that's the line, social security is saying 7,096. It will be 8,017 when I do the the other adjustment, because it's taken into account all of the different personnel that's working in the code enforcement department.
Any questions from the council on this?
I just want to add also that there was a strategic change to to change how we work with our part-time officers. They will be working, we have eliminated one of the positions. And it's for that 28-hour position, that position was working over the weekend. What Mr. George has, or what the previous city manager has explained is that there will be a new position that will work from Tuesday through Saturday, and then one that works on the weekend. So in that case, there will be two full-time positions and one part-time position. The part-time position will work on a Saturday and a Sunday, while there could be a staggered approach to have one officer work from Tuesday to Saturday, and one work from Monday to Friday. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Okay. All right. No more questions on the code enforcement? All right, well, we will move on to public works.
For public works, there was a recommendation to hire a director of public works. This will increase the previous, from the previous year to $72,000, so we are thinking of adding a director of public works, because we want to, in other words, enhance the the services of that department, we want that department to be at another level. So we have added a director. Um, so we have added a director of public works. And we have um. Taken off an assistant field supervisor. So that. Not having an assistant field su- we'll have a field supervisor that report to the director. But we have moved the assistant field supervisor. Uh, so it will kind of balance off the budget, not really balance, but it would. Kind of help with hiring a director. So that we could enhance that department to a more um, serviceable department. The um, position of um, maintenance tech one will be hired, but it will go. The anyone coming in should start at a certain rate and that's why the. The it says vacant right now, but that person when they come in will start at thirty-one thousand dollars and. Um, I wanted to bring that to your attention because if someone look at the budget, they'll see that twenty-twenty-one. It is saying thirty-three thousand eight hundred, then it moves to thirty-one thousand and decreases because we're going to be adding. A new person. Um, that person will start at the base rate for uh, tech at that level.
Okay.
And as I said, the retirement line has some adjustment. And I say it's across the board. I'll be doing those adjustments as um, I go along. And that will be uh, published next week as soon as I'm done with that um, review.
And it's the maintenance tech, the vacant one, that's the entry level position?
Yeah, I think yes, that's the entry level position.
Okay.
Ms. Schultz, you could give us more on that?
Yes, that's the entry line. I just took the job out on my on Tuesday. Uh, we had hired some time. Unfortunately, we did not show up, but yeah, that's the entry level.
Okay, thank you. And so I see that we are eliminating the assistant field supervisor and we currently have an acting. We eliminated the assistant field supervisor and we currently have an acting field supervisor. Um, what?
With the intention of Mr. Schumer to eliminate the assistant. And then when the director of public works is hired, he would be the permanent field supervisor supervising the work.
Okay. So. Okay. I'll stay away from that. So I I guess the, oh, so okay, so we eliminated the assistant field supervisor. The acting field supervisor is acting with the intention for that acting to be permanent?
That was Mr. George's idea, yes.
I I only asked that because in my experience, um, when you have acting um. Person and with the acting role, it's not necessarily guaranteed that a person stays in that role. And I know that we have a, we're eliminating the assistant field supervisor. What if that acting role doesn't?
Offline.
Okay. Yeah, alright, let's try. Any other questions for the related to the um, public works? Can you guys still see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, it looks like we have. Um, a lot of savings in this year, oh, for the proposed budget and so. I don't have any other questions as you relate to that. I guess like the council has it either, so we will move on. We did general operations on Tuesday. Woodmore Community Center.
For the Woodmore Community Center, I have actually no changes. Compared to the budget for the year before. And no one has any question with regard to that because it it's it has not changed.
The only question I have is that uh, with the cleaning supplies um, and and setup supplies. So. We budgeted five hundred, but we spent. So fiscal year twenty would have been, part of that year would have been a normal pre-COVID year. And the cleaning supplies were nine oh four. So if we think about us kind of going back to something normal. Should we be increasing the supplies there? Or I don't know what that situation was, it probably would be nine oh four. Then um, for the setup supply, it was pretty low. In fiscal year twenty, but we're taking it up quite a bit.
Um, could it? I am trying to pull up the year to date, not really year to date, but the year to. Um. To May.
Year-to-date to May thirty-first.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about year-to-date for fiscal year twenty-one. Year twenty, right? So that would have, that's there on the budget with nine oh four.
Yes, I see that.
Okay.
Alright, so that is something we'll have to look into as well and to see if we could um, really rationalize uh. A more reasonable number for cleaning supplies.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it's a big item. If you could just add it, that I I mean, I don't want to. Spend your time looking for three hundred four dollars if, because it looks like that there were the actual expenditures in twenty-twenty. So, um, if Councilman Free, are you you suggesting that it goes up to the nine oh four?
Yeah, I think you can still keep a balance by increasing the cleaning supplies line and decreasing the setup supplies line. Because the setup supplies in fiscal year twenty, we only spent three forty, but we took it all the way up to a thousand.
Councilman Jones?
I think in with the setup line, there was an issue about um, some items that that the the coordinator needed to set up the room with. Maybe we should find out from her what it is that she uses to set up if if it's uh, tablecloths or. Or, you know, uh, that she needs. If the price of them have gone up, we need to find out exactly from her what it is that they use to uh. For the setup, to accommodate setup. And then we would have a more accurate price as to um, uh, amount to put into that line item. Just a suggestion.
Excellent. And just a general question I have, Mrs. Stewart, in terms of supplies, like whether it be office supplies or cleaning supplies. Are we purchasing those in the city and then allocating the expense to the different departments? Or are the individual departments actually ordering their own supplies?
So, when I just came in, one other thing I realized is that um, let's take for example, paper, um, reams of paper. Um, what would have happened is the treasurer would make a bulk purchase. Because I think what they were saying is that he he would get it at a discount because of the bulk amount. And then after it is um, it is delivered, then he would distribute it to the different um. Departments um, as to their need. Um, how it's allocated, I haven't gotten a a proper um, response as to how. It is allocated for accounting purposes. I haven't, uh, I'm still, I'm looking for that. But um, with regard to office supplies and so on, all departments um, order for themselves. I would like to try to make it um, centralized. Um, but that is going to call for us having um, an inventory of um, of supplies. And I really don't want to do that. I want each department to just expense those as they go along. Let's not uh, put anything more into the balance sheet.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council on? The TC Community Center?
I'm sorry, one other thing, a big thing actually, and I totally um, forgot to ask it. The revenues, why aren't we expecting any revenues from the community center? I think it's, I mean, it is pretty low to rent it, but. It it should, it should be a revenue line.
I'm sorry, you're saying it should be a revenue-based uh?
Oh, there should be a revenue line.
Oh, revenue line, okay.
Because we rent that out.
Ms. Schultz, it is really hard to hear you. Um, some sometimes we can hear you loud and other times it's it's. Okay.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes, Chief O'Donnell.
I have a question, um. I know that the goal room is open and we ha- we're having events there, but there's been some questions from the staff. I also believe the community center is open for events also, correct?
I have to look into that, um. Ms. Ms. Jones, Mr. Herring, do you guys have any? Oh, Ms. Ferguson? Because I know when I was inquiring about just the opening up of different things, I know there was a process to open up. Uh, things around the city. Uh, a little fuzzy on that. Could you guys offer any um, clarity?
From what I, from what I understand, the venue, the type of venue that it is, it can be opened up. I think at at one point it was at fifty percent capacity of the capacity or now is it a hundred percent of the capacity? Because of the type of venue that it is, like the goal room, the type of venue that it is, that we can have um, the capacity. Uh, is it July first that everything changed today? Uh, everything's at a hundred percent capacity? So the the Woodmore Town Center um, uh, community center room should be open uh. If a a resident wants to um. Rent it or or, you know, I think that I'm I'm believing that uh, Ms. Duckworth is also renting that out. But we would have to ask her.
Well, the 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 issue is that she's asking me if she can rent it. And I told her that I would take it up with you guys. I I don't see why we can't rent it. But I just got to make sure it's okay with the council.
Well, we were supposed to be following the lead of the county and the lead of the county at this time was um, last. Was uh, fifty percent capacity. At that time, I thought it was being, I thought she was uh, utilizing it to be rented out. That's the 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 lead that we were taking as far as a city when Mr. George was here as the city manager.
Well, I'll check into it more because I'm getting yeses and no's, so I I'll call the county and get to the bottom of it.
But but to answer your question, Councilwoman Fareed, yes, I will um, look into. Having uh, revenue incorporated in this. And as you say, no matter how small, it is something that we have to account for. Um, so yes, I'll look into that. I'll speak with Bonnie to see if she could give me an idea of what we should expect for the next. Twelve months.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Harry.
On the on the um, the community center at Woodmore, uh, we do not rent that. We let people use that. We charge a fifty-dollar maintenance fee only. We cannot rent it based on the lease agreement that we have with VR Horton. They gave us a space as a community space, not as a rental space, and we've been going round and round on that with them. Because they're saying we're using it as a rental space and we and they want to take it away from us and we're like, no, we're using it as a community space for people to have events over there. So there shouldn't be any revenue um, associated with that, with that line item. And if you put down rental revenue, then we're going to have another issue. So I think the best thing to do is uh, uh, get the lease agreement that we have and and read it. Because it is not a rental, it is not a rental facility, it's a community room. We can charge a maintenance fee which for covering the cleanup and all of that, that's about it. But we can't charge a straight flat rental fee for that room. Otherwise, they're going to pull it.
Okay, so that will be the revenue that um, we will have. It will state maintenance fee.
Yeah, and that that's great context, um, Councilman Herring. I think if I recall correctly from when I used that room, um, you you sign an agreement, our rental agreement. Um, so we probably need to change that language as well so that we're not, you know, so that it's clear. That when someone's using it, they're not renting it, but.
But but are you saying this was for the um, for the Woodmore Center or for the goal room?
For the Woodmore Town Center.
Okay.
Use that, it's a, it's a room.
Okay.
Yeah, and I agree with uh, Ms. Fareed, because I've been trying to get that changed for, I don't know how long, to get rental offer to input user agreement or something. That needs to come off of that contract, so.
Councilwoman Jones?
And I do have a copy of the Woodmore Town Center um, uh, uh, agreement that we have with them. So I will make a cop- copies of that and uh, uh, send it to you, text it to the council. I I don't, uh, this is, I don't have a, I'm, I hope this is the latest one or the only one that they have. But it is um, information pertaining to the Woodmore Town Center, that room.
And and yes, I would love to get a copy of that also. Thank you.
I will include you, sir.
Yes.
Chief O'Donnell, have you spoken with the the mayor as it relates to the opening of the Woodmore Town Center room?
Uh, no, I talked to him about the goal, but I did not talk to him about the uh, rental property at Woodmore, but I will.
Yeah, and. Any council uh, woman or man can can jump in. I I don't think that. I don't see how that power rests with the council, uh, how that's a legislative matter, um, opening up of of. I see that the, on administrative side, the the mayor has the authority to open building, city buildings. Uh, but I don't, I'm fuzzy on where the Woodmore Town Center, Community Center falls. Mr. Herring, I saw you unmute yourself.
Community Center falls under the the City of Glenerton, which is the mayor and the council. And the council is the one that approves the contract. Agreement with the uh, Woodmore Town Center, so, I mean, like I said. And that's, and that goes for the city buil- buil- buildings also. The council is responsible for the city property and city buildings and all of that other stuff, so. Um, that's where it falls at in line with the charter. If you look at the um. Property in Glenerton, it belongs to the 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 mayor and the city council, so that's how the council has responsibility over. The safety of all the buildings. And opening and closing other buildings. Even the county exec got to get approval from the county council to open and close a building.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's where that falls.
So. So then we just have to vote on it. I mean, because I I, I hate to keep on passing a buck. Um, if that's our responsibility, then we should.
Yep, that's 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 what we need to do.
Move on it. Um, and was there a vote to to close it or did it just close?
It was a vote by the council to close the building.
Okay.
Yes, it was, and there's a vote to open it back up, so.
Okay. Mr. Herring, do you know when that vote was?
To close it? To close it?
Mm-hmm.
It was in March, right before the pandemic. We had an executive session. I gotta figure out the actual date.
If you could look into that, please, as well, and, and, and email it to the council. That'll be great. And then Chief Aldana, we could actually move on it so you don't have to keep on going around the mulberry bush to figure out, you know, to, you know, whether it's open or closed.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions for the Woodmore Town Center, Community Center? All right, Veterans Memorial.
So for the Veterans Memorial, the apartment tenants line has changed from fifteen hundred to seven thousand. This is a mod that was budgeted in a previous year. But when I look at the actual to May twenty twenty one, it was, um, we had only fourteen hundred dollars spent for that line. I don't know if we should revert back to the fifteen hundred or we should stay at seven thousand. I'm seeking some assistance there. Just to find out if we need to reconsider that seven thousand dollars.
The, the landscaping, maintenance, electrical workers, is that in-house or contractual?
I don't know if it is contractual. I would have to lean on someone on about that.
The landscaping, from what I understand, was contractual. They had someone come in and do the landscaping and maintenance of the Veterans Memorial. But I've seen this summer that Public Works has been over there cutting the grass and stuff. I'm not sure if they're, if they're still contracting that out or not.
I'm sorry. Council, Councilwoman Fareed, then I'll come back to you. Council. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes, is there a reason why they, Public Works wasn't always doing this and why there was a contract for landscaping? I would have think that Public Works would have obviously been.
Mr. President, I can answer that.
Councilman Herring.
The issue is, is that, is the landscaping, especially, we need to, we don't have an experienced person to deal with the plants, the pruning and all of that other stuff that's around that memorial. So we always use a contractor. Because one, the memorial has won two beautification awards already in Prince Edward's County. It comes up every year. So we always try to keep it up. And also out of respect for the veterans to make sure it looks pristine. So that's why we contract out the service to Brightview. And they come around every, they do seasonal maintenance. And our public works cut the grass, but when it comes down to the pruning and the maintenance of the flowers and the mulching and all of that, they come and do all of that.
Okay.
So I mean, just from our point of view, I think that number actually really needs to go up. Cause the maintenance is more than that. If we've only spent fifteen, if we only spent fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars so far, I know for a fact we had a five thousand dollar contract for the spring maintenance alone. And I know that's, I don't know if that invoice hasn't come through yet or not. But I do know that there was a, a five thousand dollar contract for spring maintenance.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention. I will review just to ensure that this is not an oversight on, in the accounts. Yes.
Reach out to Brightview because they should have submitted it by now. If, if, and you don't want to make sure that they didn't, so.
Brightview.
Brightview, yeah. And like I said, I mean, they do seasonal, so I'm like, that might be, that, that's too low. Also, we need to think, you know, are we gonna add more names to the memorial? So do we need more paper money? But that's another that's a project. So I don't know if we have anybody who wants to take the time to do it. We try to do it every two to three years and add names to it, so. But I do think the maintenance need to be upped for the contracted maintenance that we provide for that memorial.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Stewart, you could go look for that contract. I'm pretty sure you were, well, I didn't know if you were aware of it before, but from a accounting standpoint, I'm pretty sure you're just gonna look out for all the expenses that you needed to accrue anyway. Cause even if we don't get the invoice, oh, well, we didn't get it about June thirtieth. If, even if we get it this week or next week, it's still going to be included in the FY twenty one expenses, so. Just find a contract and see where we stand with that, please. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Jones.
To assist Mr. Stewart, I might have some information on their contract also. I think I ran across some when I was looking at some papers, some, in some papers. So I'll look through that, look for that again and bring it up to you tomorrow.
Thank you. Sounds good.
All right. Any other questions for the Veterans Memorial? And we'll move on to the gold room. Mr. Stewart.
The gold room. We had an increase in salaries and benefit. Because we are, we are adding a an event crew, another event crew member. And that would move up the number from one oh two thousand to one fourteen. And the other area I want to bring to your attention is that about the capital outlay. Which is the gold room reimbursing the general fund for money spent by the general fund for the enterprise fund, which is the gold room. In the budget for last year, there was twenty five thousand. Is it, do I have it right? Yes, it was twenty five thousand. Thousand. Wait a minute. No, the capital outlay was for chairs and table sound system and so on, but now it has reduced to five thousand. Yes, for that I need to get some, some assistance because I don't know if we got all the chairs and, and all the equipment that was needed for the goal. So I think we need to follow more on that. It says five thousand now. Maybe someone could fill me in on that. I will continue. Do we have another page for the goal room here?
No.
That's it?
Okay. Yes.
I know there was a transfers out. Is there a transfers out? Row? And now we had a transfers, okay. Operations transfer, that's the twenty thousand that you see there. Utility expenses have been cost for twenty thousand. Operate, operation transfer. We didn't have a number there this year. And as I was saying before, that fund was to reimburse the general fund, funds that we have spent. I don't know. This year I think we need to go back to that. I don't know how well the goal room will be running. But for now, I think the goal room needs some help with regard to earnings. The goal room really do need some assistance to, to, to really make it be an entrepreneurial enterprise. Right now, it's not making enough money to cover itself. And the general fund is taking a hit on that. So we either do more, do more in expenses to set it up, like advertising and so on. So that we could, you know, reap more from what that vicinity should be providing.
What? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones first.
Uh, yes, there was a resolution. That was the plan before COVID. That's what Mrs. Schultz is saying. And then she also said that, that they're filling a position. They're not that, that's to fill a position. That they're, they're backfilling a position, I think is what she's mentioned. But there was also in twenty nineteen, a resolution to change the rates of the goal room as far as the monies that would be charged per event. And in twenty twenty, I had submitted a rescind of that resolution due to not, the, the resolution that was submitted did not include the legacy organizations in the city such as the Boys and Girls Club, the Glen Arden Track Team. I think the another, the civic association, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong on that one. And then the women at the VFW, they were always allowed to use the goal room for gratis to raise money for the Boys and Girls Club because they always did well. But either they used it to raise money for the Boys and Girls Club or to have their event to honor the, the, the children on the Boys and Girls Club that did well. The Glen Arden Track Team would use it to raise money for their organization, which the Glen Arden Track Team, if anybody knows about them, we all do, that they were a worldwide organization. People know them from all over and they do very well with the kids. But when, of course, when COVID came, you know, they've kind of slacked down a little bit. But I felt like those organizations should have been put into the new guidelines for the goal room as far as a fee schedules. So we as a council need to sit down and come up with, look at a fee structure that we can restructure the fees for the goal room. And bring them out of the nineteen, I think, eighty fee schedule that's here. But we need to also include our legacy organizations for, for, for gratis. For what they do, that one time, one, one event per year will not break the city. And allowing those organizations that have done so well with our children to utilize the goal room. But once again, we as a council need to sit down and come up with a new fee schedule for the goal room. That, that may help. And the advertising and, you know, just.
Promotion in, in promotion, yes.
Would, would greatly help the goal room.
So we haven't, we haven't looked into the fees since the eighties?
Well, the fees that were probably on the resolution and that was presented in twenty nineteen. That was, I don't know what, I don't know where those fees came from or what, you know, how old they were. But the, the, the object was to increase the fees. But when they left out those legacy organizations, I asked to resend it back to the fees that they are. So they're, whatever the, whatever the fee schedule was, I don't know what year it was developed. But I know, I know it needs to be redeveloped.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Um, yes, I think that similar to the community room, we need to add a line here for the revenue.
Oh, no, it is on, if you go back to the after the capital, at the front page, after the capital expenditures. And after leaving all government funding, then you'll see enterprise fund because it's a separate entity from the, from the government.
What pages?
Go back to the front.
I was looking for that. I didn't see it. I thought I had heard though that the goal room. I did not see where it was.
So I'm going back to the, the old document and it was page eleven. If you go to page eleven and scroll down. That's capital. So it would be the next page, page twelve.
Under capital.
Scroll down. There you go.
I'm looking at this line, one thirty eight.
Yes.
Ah, okay, great. So when and I know this is different, government accounting is different than others. So this, so we have this enterprise. This one thirty eight five hundred, are these the expenses below it?
Yes, those are the same expenses as what's in the last page.
Okay, so this is where we can see how profitable or not profitable the bowl one is on this.
Exactly.
Okay.
His, his start, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I think this is what you were saying, that historically it has not been making any money. If you look at the last the last three years or the last two years, you see, it's like a hundred and thirty. I mean, one year, they did not collect any revenue. And then the other year, seventeen thousand with an expense of over eighteen thousand. So they have been really depending on our general funds to cover a lot of the, their expenses, especially salaries. So we really do need to inject, if we're gonna keep this enterprise running, the goal room. We need to really look into it and, and put some money in it with regard to promotions. And look at the fee schedule because it needs to cover for itself.
Right, but I think we might also, you know, and it was probably not too much more to say in this meeting, but what is the purpose of the room and how we intend to use it? Because if we're saying, you know, it's, it's for the community to have a, then I don't know that we'll be able to raise that much. You know, off a baby shower. So I think we need to I see you laughing, Mrs. Stewart. You know, I think, I, I think we need to figure out what a strategy is to bring in larger events, maybe even host some conferences or things like that where we can really earn more money.
Right, so you definitely need to have an event planner, someone who will go out and really sell this, this idea that Glen Arden does have this, this goal room that is, you know, a place that you should think of having your program so that we could cover these costs. Yes.
Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Jones.
At one point, the goal room was a booming business. We had cabarets Friday night, Saturday night, and something was going on all days, not all day, but Sunday also. So it, it took care of itself. But then the roof started leaking and it was allowed to sit and not be repaired for almost four years. So that shut the goal room down. And then when we finally got it, done, done some restructuring with the inside COVID came. So it kind of slowed it down again. But then also we have to take in consideration, one of the things that was brought up by a person about the goal room. If we're going to have events with most of the, the, the venues now, they're upgraded with screens that come out of the ceiling and, and speaker systems that, you know, will accommodate what these types of events would need. So those are the types of things we have to look at also. So it was never that the goal room didn't make, it did make money because we did have cabarets almost every weekend. But then when it started in, in this, the era where you go to a cabaret or go to a dance and then Go-Go came out and people started not enjoying the venue as a place to relax and have fun with their friends. Then the county stepped in and stopped having those trying to bring those events to a halt. You know, where, especially with the Go-Go issue.
You took it back, Councilwoman Jones, when Go-Go came out.
And and one of the restrictions of the, um, of the goal room that I heard is that, um. As we are a government organization, um, like liquor and so on cannot. Um, go into that, you cannot have liquor and so on in there. And you find that a lot of patrons want to have that and, um. It's one of the turn offs, but that's the rule we have to stick by.
No, they can get a liquor license, but, you know.
I, uh, we, so, yeah, it's something that we we could brainstorm on on how to do that. My only concern is that. And I know Councilwoman Jones said we're backfilling a position. But on the, uh, on the detail, it that wasn't in the budget in the. Previous three years. And if we're not doing anything, why do we need another position for? And I can go back to it. I think it was forty-one. Um, so and.
So I've done twelve thousand.
FY nineteen, FY twenty, nothing was there, FY twenty-one, nothing was there. Uh, but we're adding this person. So we're, if we're losing money. Because we're not having anything, what's the purpose of of adding another event crew member?
Uh, Karen says there was always four people in the chat. And let me, let me go back to read what she said about that person. She says, Ms. Jones, we are not adding a new body, but fill behind a person that left. That was the plan before COVID. So.
Okay, so then my question is, so we're losing money even before COVID. So I understand it's not a new position. We're backfilling the position. But if we're consistently losing money. What events are we having? That. We that necessitates us having four crew members.
Uh, they're still having weddings and anniversaries, the church. Um, is still there. And then there's still a question of, we have not, I don't think they've opened up yet back to the. N A A A meetings because I think they pay like eighty dollars a month. And they're there three times a week. That's something else that the council that needs to sit down and discuss.
So, so would it be, um. Was for, uh, I I'm sorry. Next question is, are we actively looking to hire that position?
Uh, Ms. Schultz would have to answer that question.
Ms. Schultz, you could use the chat since we can't hear you.
While while she's typing, um, because this is the, I think you know that in my job, I'm the. Global Meeting Process Leader Advisor. These are, um. These, and I don't know if this is the right place for it, so we don't need to get into too much detail around how you can, um. Structure the resources that are supporting these types of events so that you can kind of ebb and flow with the. Volume of activity, um, that you have. So maybe we should talk about that as well.
Yeah.
While we're waiting for, uh, Ms. Schultz to get in. Um, let me just say, I mean, we we technically, excuse, sorry.
No, I think it's everybody, Councilman Herring, so.
Um, we 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 actually cannot fill our position. The charter said clearly says we cannot have a deficit budget. And, uh, um, the expenses cannot exceed the revenues. So something has to be cut in that in that in that, uh, budget. Or either you're going to have to increase your revenue, something has to be done. Um, it's unrealistic, I mean. They, I mean, they may be able to, if the goal room gets back open and running. You can bring in about a hundred and forty, hundred fifty thousand dollars with, um. Weddings and, um, and and, um. Cabarets, but the problem with the cabaret is that we gotta have a dance hall license. And that's where the issue is coming in with the goal room. Is that we've been going round and round with the county on getting a dance hall license. Um. Me and Ms. Small was sat down with the county and the county police and talked about it. And they're like, well, yeah, you need a dance hall license. When we go to the county, they're like, well, you know. The law is informing this with governments. And we're like, well, can you put that in writing? And they're like, no. You know, then we asked them, do y'all have a dance hall license for your venues? They're like, no, but you need one. So it's like we're in the catch twenty-two. And we need to, we need to get that cleared up because at any time, the police could come in and shut us down. So that needs to be worked on. Um. Like I said, before all of this, the goal room could bring in about a hundred and. Like I said, a hundred fifty, hundred sixty thousand dollars and still pay out the twenty thousand dollars that they would have to owe to the city for overhead. But, um. Like I said, but Ms. Jones, like she said, she rescinded that last piece of legislation that increased the fees to take them back. So that's where, that's the biggest issue you're gonna have. Because a lot of people rent the goal room because it's two thousand dollars. And you can bring your own caterer in. So they find it very advantageous to use it. It doesn't have all the high tech stuff, but it gives you a lot of other advantages. It gives you a lot more freedom than having to use a caterer on site or use somebody else's caterer. So. Is it, and the word will get out once it's open, but it does need to be marketed. It does need to be, um. Uh, those fees need to come up and giving away sixteen, what, two, four, six, eight to ten thousand dollars in gratis when you're losing, losing money already. Doesn't seem realistic to me. You want to give a nice discount, give a nice discount. But something needs to be covered.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Um. I I think this, the government has to be completely reimagined. Um, I, as. As an accountant and CPA, I agree, I can't. We can't keep on losing money. So and and I don't know the whole description for the goal room coordinator, if if part of that person's position is. Advertising, but I think the whole thing needs to be, uh, reimagined so that it can bring in money for a city. I I mean, I'm. I don't doubt that it can bring in money, but how do we advertise it to make more money? And. We're just coming off of COVID. Um, I don't know how realistic it is for us to. Realistic it is for us to have expectations for it to just come out booming, uh, with post-COVID. Um, activity. Uh, and I welcome the council's thoughts of whether to. And and we can hold on this because we we really need to hear from Ms. Schultz. Um, about this, but whether we should keep it in the budget. And not advertise, just have it as a placeholder, um. Or eliminate it altogether. And there there's some savings right there that, you know, because I know you made some increases in some other places. Where we could, uh, take that out, um, and help balance the budget. Uh, Mr. Stewart, you're on mute.
Um, yes, sorry about that, but understand that the goal room or enterprise fund does not really. Um, mix with the government fund. Um, we try to show those funds separate. So, um, any savings from it is just saving from our general fund. Because the general fund is actually subsidizing it and and we can't continue with that.
Yeah, and that's my point. So if it's draining our general fund, then that's something that we don't have to. Use to. To subsidize the goal room.
Okay, so Ms. Schultz has come back on the, through the chat and she's saying. There was always three people with an extra that came off. Currently, three members. There are three people, um, in the goal room crew. And one person just left June the fourth. She says, I am recruiting vice. I don't understand that, but I don't want to call anybody's name because it's personnel. Before COVID, the former city manager was looking into marketing. If not, if I'm not mistaken, there are four to six scheduled events. Currently scheduled for the goal room, uh, through the year.
Okay.
Is recruiting vice the person that left? So I'm not sure if she's recruiting for somebody or she'll have to clarify that.
Any other thoughts, uh, Councilman Ferguson, Councilman Free, Councilman, uh, Hairston?
No, I'm good.
All right.
I'm good.
All right, thank you, sir. We can move on to, if there's nothing else for the goal room, we can move on to, uh, special revenue, page nine.
Um, so for the goal room, um, we will keep what we have here. For further, until further notice. That's what I'm hearing.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Can I keep that deficit in that goal room? Something has to be done with that deficit. So if you want to make believe that we're going to get extra money, you better increase the revenue or or cut one of the positions out. Can I keep a deficit in that, in that, in that, in that budget?
Uh, another question I have is, is the, I take it that the roof was, the roof was six, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, my other question is, over the years, um, when I look at even the budget for last year. It was running at deficit. How did they pass that with that deficit?
Shouldn't, that shouldn't have passed either. There should not be a deficit in there because when we, when we looked at it. It was not a deficit. When I looked at it, it wasn't a deficit. What they do after we, after it's passed, I don't know. Because these numbers change all mysteriously for some odd reason after it leaves, uh, from one hand to the other, so. It should not be, it should not be a deficit in there. As a matter of fact, one year to get rid of the deficit, we actually forgave the twenty thousand dollar transfer. So that we can get rid of that deficit, but, you know, that should have been in there. That needs to be in there because that's the cost of doing business. And like I said, that's a separate budget. That's shown separately in our audit. So you can't see it in the charter says you can't do it.
Good, uh, Councilman Herring, could you, um. Provide guidance in charter? What section?
Hold on, let me get it right quick.
Okay. And just for context, as I said before, big on context for our citizens. Is that I want to make sure that when we're referencing a charter, that we just don't speak about the charter, that we actually give our citizens clear, clear references.
And eight oh five, uh. Budget contents. Eight oh five, um, D. It says the total propos, the total proposed expenditures in the budget should not exceed the total estimated revenue. So. So, they, I mean, they need to look at that.
Councilwoman, uh, Free, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, as I understand that, um, cause of the section, that's talking about the total. Budget, not the individual, um. Funds or the, uh, individual department that in total, so that kind of summary section. Has been provided, that that has to balance. The total revenues have to equal the total expenditures.
That's for, it like, the general fund, the general operating budget is a separate budget from the goal room because the goal room is enterprise owned. And it's reflected separately in our audits. So that's a separate business in and of itself. So that budget cannot be, um, a deficit. Looking at the general fund, that has to be, that has to be zero too. So you can't, you can't combine the two.
Miss, Councilman Herring. So I. I read it the same way, um, and but I do agree with you, but I just, so for clarity. I agree that the, um, the way I read it is that the total proposed expenditures in the budget should not exceed the total. Of estimated revenue. Uh, so I'm in agreement with that from the governmental budget. As you said, the enterprise is separate. Uh, so I think that those are two separate things. However, I still agree that. About a budget should balance. I just don't agree that that. Necessarily includes the, um, the goal room. But either way, how will we get there? I I still agree that it should balance. So I think I, I I think that we should look at that, um, and I would start. With that position. Because I don't, I don't see it in FY nineteen or FY twenty. And if we were able to do work, well, we didn't do much in FY twenty, but if we were able to do work. Uh, in FY nineteen, um. Without this. Fourth individual. Now I'll see why we can't do it this year. Oh, I'm sorry, in FY twenty-two, oh, yeah, it's.
Yes. And what happened? We are looking at seventeen thousand as a deficit. This additional person is twelve thousand. Um, so that hits off twelve thousand. We're still left with five thousand to contend with as a deficit.
Okay. Anybody else in agreement with removing that position?
You said we're losing the position?
With, with not not included in a budget, not necessarily eliminated altogether. If we can get things ramped up this year. To have, uh, uh, more revenue and FY, um. Twenty twenty-three, uh, then we could put some money back into that line, but I don't think that this position should be funded for FY twenty-two.
I agree. Did you need to do a consensus?
Oh, well, we can, uh, Councilman Jones agrees, Councilman Ferguson. Councilman Free. Councilman Hairston.
Sorry, we'll be doing a consensus on right now at the moment, sorry.
Uh, to not fund the fourth event crew member for the gold room. Because the the gold room is currently not making money and we're in a deficit.
Alright, so it's in that plan, yes.
Councilman Harry.
Uh, yes, not to find.
Okay, alright, so, so Mr. Stewart, let's remove that, please. And you say that takes us down to five thousand?
Takes us to five thousand. Anywhere else we could cut? Or do we bump up revenue?
I'd say we stop there. Um, and ramp up. Try to ramp up revenue.
Okay, so we move up revenue by five thou, just to balance the budget.
Well, President Curtis.
Forty.
Council, uh, hold on, uh, Mr. Stewart, Councilman, Councilwoman Free.
I think, you know, we need to ramp up revenue, but only to the extent it is actually feasible to. Earn that revenue. So we might need to speak with the goal room coordinator before coming up with an amount. That would be, well, for all the reasons, you know, described, we're post-COVID, we don't necessarily know, um. We don't necessarily know what. Is on the horizon for a reasonable amount of increase.
I agree, the, the setup expense, tablecloth, napkins, cups. Are we throwing away our, our tablecloths? Or are we washing them and and reusing them?
That's where I was going to with the table, that nine thousand is, I would like to see how much they actually spend for. Um, those things, they do use disposable tablecloths, but. Napkins and cups, I'm not sure to, I can't remember if we provide those or not, but I know we'd provide tablecloths.
I mean, are, are they?
And then cleaning supplies. Also thirty-five hundred. I mean, you shouldn't have to buy a new mop and a broom every time you have a event.
And and I don't know this, but. The napkins and cups, they're real napkins and cups. They're not paper, are they?
I believe that they're paper. We would have to ask the coordinator.
They're paper. I don't know why you didn't give, I don't know why we give them cups. I never understood that.
Yeah, well, that's another thing that we can add into just rethinking the goal room because if we want to market it, you know, to the right customer, I don't think we want to be using paper cups and paper napkins. That's for another discussion. Um, but I think that's probably the line where we can get the five thousand dollars, uh, Mr. Stewart. And then in conjunction, we could talk with the goal room coordinator, um, to see if anything else can be done to increase the, the revenue line. And I think we're good with that. From a cash perspective, that, I think that should do it from a P and L perspective, we're close. And I say that because it's depreciation expenses, a non-cash item. So, alright, I think good on that one. So, uh, special revenue fund, if we can go through this.
Um, special revenue fund, I didn't see that much changes in special revenue.
What page is that? Mr. Stewart?
Go to page ten. Let's see what page ten is saying. Scroll down.
Oh, they make these things too small, so.
What's?
I, I'm sorry, but the one that I had, the, the schedule that I have does not have the, um, the numbers on it. So I apologize for that.
Well, while we, while we hear.
Nine.
Sorry.
Look at page nine. Let's click on page nine. Go down. Go to the next. Special.
Special revenue fund.
Yeah.
So you see there, there aren't much changes between years. Um, the budget is actually a copy of what happened last year. Budget wise, but I wanted to talk about the P E G grant fees. Um, it was, um, budgeted for forty-eight thousand. Um, we did it again this year. Um, when I look at, um, year to date for twenty twenty-one, uh, we actually had seventy-three thousand five hundred. So that and us putting out so that, uh, we could consider, you know, this number, if it's reasonable. Um, looking at twenty twenty actuals, it was sixty, it was sixty-three, five hundred nineteen. Um, so I'm considering if we should leave it there or, I mean, conservatively, um, should we consider leaving it there or bring it up a little even to sixty? Conservative wise thinking, yes, keep it low, but, um, that, that's really low compared to twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one as I'm stating it, you know, to, to May, it's seventy-three thousand five hundred.
Thoughts on the council?
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I have a, a, a problem with this line item, uh, for peg because peg money can only be used for cable equipment. So we shouldn't have be showing a surplus in that line. Um, because basically it's, it's basically balancing our budget with that surplus to the general fund is balancing the budget and it shouldn't be doing that. That money can only be used for cable equipment and cable personnel. So either you're going to spend forty-eight thousand or you're not. So they shouldn't be showing a surplus in that line. Peg is restricted revenue and it should not be supplementing our general, our general, our general operating budget, which is what it's doing. Because we're showing a surplus at the end of the general operating budget of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars or whatever it is. But that number needed, they need to either reduce that because it, I mean, we're going to get the peg no matter what, but you don't have to spend all the peg. It just sits in a separate bank account. And when we're ready to use it, we can pull it out. But if you're going to spend, if you're going to upgrade the, uh, the, the cable department or whatever, we're going to do with it or new equipment, then we need to show exactly what we're spending and it should be an in and out really. Because it's restricted money. So I think that number needs to be adjusted down to match the expenses that we actually going to spend for peg.
That grant documentation, where is that?
I had to look and see. It should be in the, it should be in the, uh, finance office. They just, they just did a new, um, I think they just did a new peg agreement about maybe five or six years ago.
Okay. Mr. Stewart, could you pull that? I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Harry, where you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Stewart, can you pull that grant information, grant documentation, please, and, uh, provide it to the council so that we could, uh, review it to see what we can include in there? Um, and also we talked about, you know, I know we talked about yesterday, the cable equipment and the, um, council chambers upgrading the, the equipment in there. So if we could, um, see if that could help cover the upgrades.
Yes.
Needed to that, then maybe I'd have put that there.
Um, so i- if it's my understanding, um, it's that the cable department could be subsidized by this grant, but you know, we will look at the grant, see what it has to offer and then make a decision as to how we handle the cable department.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions on this? Uh, camera enforcement revenues.
Camera enforcement, just like the, um, just like the pig is carrying the same amount. And I could report that, and this is saying thirty thousand dollars, but the opposite of what happened with the peg. Um, as of May, um, twenty twenty-one, um, I, I am seeing seventeen thousand six hundred. Uh, so, you know, here we need to really look at this number again. The actual for twenty twenty is saying twenty-five thousand. Um, so conservatively, um, should we reconsider this number?
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
Um, that number can be a little higher. It depends on what we had left over from the previous years. Um, the money is restricted to public safety only. So we may be getting less this year, but we could have money left over from previous years where we didn't spend all of the photo enforcement money. I don't, I don't know what the balance is on, on that. I've been trying to get that too. So you may want to check and see. Um, you should be getting, I thought you, uh, you should have been getting reports from, but you can reach out to the, uh, 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 auto traffic to see if they got, you can submit reports. Reach out to auto traffic and see if they can give you any information on what we got the previous years.
Well, that'll be different, um, from revenue. The revenue will be recognized in the year it was gained and then we can, if we, if we can subsidize, if we haven't, if it was restricted for particular use, then we have some funds left in the account to use it, but that's not new revenue for the current year.
It should be a separate line item. I mean, like we do, well, like we're doing in the rest of the budget where we have, uh, general, general fund surplus or whatever that is. So you should be showing what we're getting this year in a separate line for any additional revenue that we may have to use for.
But that, hmm, so sorry, that is more like a cash flow, um, situation more than an, um, income statement situation. Because cash flow means cash came in and we're holding those funds for future use. If that's what you're suggesting.
That's what we've been doing. We do that with, with that and with how we use them. Which I didn't see on here, but that's another question when we get to it.
To your point, I, I think that it's good that it's at seventeen thousand because that means that people aren't speeding. Unfortunately, including that seventeen thousand, it's forty dollars from me by way of my wife. Uh, but we paid that bill. So, but that, that is good if we're, um, because one of the concerns of, I know of citizens is speeding through the city. So uh, if that's gone down, though we're not getting the revenue that's actually safer for our city. So Councilman Jones?
There is also, from what I understand, I think Chief O'Donnell might be, be able to expound on this, but there's some monies out there that we need to collect, that we have to go through a third party that we should have collected maybe years ago or Chief O'Donnell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, several years ago, I presented a resolution to the council to hire a collection agency to collect all our unpaid parking and, uh, speed tickets and they were, that resolution was not passed. I did it again several years later. The resolution was not pa, not passed again. And right now, Ms. Allen and Ms. Jones are working with the company, trying to come up with another plan.
Any, any history on why it wasn't passed? What, what happens now? Now that we don't have that company, the, the money just sits out there.
We're just, we're just sitting on tickets that are unpaid and there's nothing we can do to make anybody pay. The only thing we can do is if motor vehicle not, notifies us that a person has not paid a ticket, then we can flag their tag. But they don't notify us all the time, especially during the pandemic. We didn't get notified about anything. So we're gonna, hopefully in the next October, November, we'll present another resolution to the new council and see what their pleasure is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, chief, because that was about, what, about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars we were looking at at that point, right?
At that point, we're looking at, yeah, about three fifty, three seventy-five. We're probably, we're probably up a little bit now.
Right, because, um, at that time, it's a certain council member wouldn't, wouldn't vote for it because she felt we weren't doing our having, uh, doing our, handling our fiduciary responsibility. And I'm like, that's the way you handle it is try to collect what you, what you owe, you know, so it was short by one vote, so.
Well, well, the pro, the, the problem is, is that, you know, it's pretty well known that you can get a parking ticket or you can get a speeding ticket and there's no consequences.
Right. And, 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 and at that time, the company was only asking for what, ten percent?
Uh, no, they're asking for thirty-three percent.
I mean, but back then I thought it was less than that.
No, I think they're all around and even the ones we're dealing with now are close to thirty percent.
Small price to pay to get seventy percent. So, uh, 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 over three hundred thousand dollars. Alright, thank you.
Alright, we'll look forward to that, Chief O'Donnell, uh, and we could take it up as a council to, um, to make sure we can get those, uh, monies collected.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Faree?
I know you want to end the meeting, so I will.
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, but, um, I, I wonder if we could benefit from having more speed cameras? I don't know what the investment would be in those. Um, but to your point around there being speeding concerns in the city.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, a speed camera has to be located within a half mile of a school. So we don't have any other place where we can put a speed camera. We've been trying for ten years to put a speed camera on Martin Luther King Highway.
Mm-hmm.
That has to be approved by the state. Senator Benson has told me that hopefully in the next session, she will introduce legislation to give us a camera on Martin Luther King. But, you know, like I said, we've been trying to get that camera for ten years.
Thank you. That's interesting. And are, it doesn't need to be within a school within your city?
Yes.
Uh, okay, because I was going to say Ardwood, Ardmore or Ardwood Elementary should be within a half mile of.
Yes, Ardmore Elementary is in our city, however.
It is? Okay, I thought it was.
Yeah, that, then you have a road problem because that's a county road and they won't give us a permit.
Got it. Um, okay. And then my other point on the, the camera photo enforcement. Ten percent, I think of this revenue goes to the explorer program. Could it be an expenditure item here?
We, we get, uh, we get ten percent of our budget plus expenses.
From the camera photo?
If our budget's four million dollars, we would get four hundred thousand plus expenses. So I don't understand why the state will not give us a camera because they'll make millions of dollars on Martin Luther King Highway.
No, no, I understand that. I'm sorry. I was referring to, um, the, there's a line item in the public safety for the explorer program, the program that you have with the young children. And it says that ten percent of that is from the, the camera. I don't know. If you go back to that one, it's like a, it's like a footnote there.
Yeah, they, they, they take money, uh, from the cameras. We take, uh, an hour every day from both police clerks salary. We take money from the camera, put it in the police clerk salary, and we take money and put it in the explorer program.
Okay, so I wondered, should those be itemized on that previous page that we were looking at, the amount that goes to the explorer program?
No, we're do, we're doing okay. We get, uh, between two and four thousand dollars a month in revenue from the speed cameras.
And that's great. So I, I think what I'm saying is just the presentation of it on that the previous page because we're only showing the revenue coming in, but we're not showing the fact that out of the speed camera, there's funding for the explorer program. I feel like, um, President Curtis, please scroll down a bit more. I think there's a, I thought I saw like a footnote at the bottom here. It sits right there. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad you brought that up. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
So, yes, so, um, I, I agree with, um, Councilman, um, Faree that we should definitely have. that we should definitely have ten percent of whatever we are earning um or whatever we are budgeting in a line item for the Explorer program. So I will um think of that and hope the rest of the council will understand. But I'll set up a line for that.
I'm curious to know, what's the percentage of people who pay without the um uh, who currently pay their speeding tickets?
I, I couldn't tell you that, sir, but I can tell you that every month we receive between two and four thousand dollars.
Okay.
But I, I don't know what percentage that would be. Believe it or not, the camera on Martin Luther King has been there for ten years and still takes most of the revenue.
The camera Martin Luther King?
Oh, Martin Luther King.
I'm sorry, the camera at uh on Grant on Barclay, I'm sorry.
Okay. And so, so we're doing the ten percent of what we collect, or ten percent of what is owed?
Ten percent of what we collect, I believe.
Okay. And to, to the council, I wanted to uh bring up, I'm glad you bring, brought that up, Councilwoman Fareed. Uh, another way to engage the youth in our community. Um, and I know this is a new budget, so we cannot do everything this year. Uh, we're just really trying to get the the budget passed and more planning has to be into it. Uh, but I'm interested in your thoughts of of how the legislative body could engage our youth by having maybe an intern program or uh things like that. Um, I, I, I don't know if it can be paid going into fiscal year twenty two, cause you know, we're trying to balance the budget now. Uh, but just wanted to throw that out there to look into that, to see how we can engage the youth better uh and prepare them. Uh, cause eventually, they'll be sitting in these seats. Um, and anything we could do to prep them, uh, whoever has an interest in going into public office, I think um will benefit our city and 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 them, so.
President Curtis, I agree with that. Um, I know we've uh put out ideas such as a junior council. Um, where, you know, people would kind of be involved. Um, interns would certainly be helpful, I'm sure, for for all of us as we, you know, get more into the legislative responsibilities um when we are out of recess. Or it doesn't feel like the recess, but um I think that those would be great ideas. Um, I would suggest that we engage the citizens on their ideas um for how we go about doing that. I don't know if it's having a public meeting or what we do in order to kind of, or maybe setting up a committee that can focus on those youth activities and and coming up with a, with a strategy and structure.
Okay, uh, Councilman Hairston, let's see your hand up. Was that on purpose?
Yeah, that was on purpose. I got a question. When you saying, when you saying engage the youth, you mean like, is this like, as far as like this things, as as far as like city business go? Like you're saying, the things that we do to prepare them to get in our seats? Or when you're saying engage the youth, do you mean in a general sense, it's like, you know, us being active or giving them other events and other things to do within the community in general? Like, or you just mean prepping them to get here?
No, it's, it's all encompassing. Um, I, and I was just reading through the charter and see where that lies. Uh, engagement, I mean, cause we could do engagement in the youth on, you know, just without vote or anything like that. Um, but um budgeted event, where, what lies on the administration side and what lies on the legislative body side? I, I think that, um, you raised a good point. I think it's all encompassing. Uh, but I was looking for, as it relates to the, the budget, what we can do as a legislative body to do that. Now, if that includes everything, fine, uh, but if it only includes things that can pertain to the legislative actions, then we should engage with the administration side to see how we can encompass the rest of the engagement with youth. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I follow you.
Okay.
But I, I was just really piggybacking off of you saying, um, I'd like, I specifically heard you say something about, you know, they'll be taking over, you know, the government next when we move out of the place. So I was just making sure that, like, were you just speaking from the aspect of them filling council seats? So you were speaking from the aspect of like us just having programs in general, like, you know, things that can teach them computers or, you know, sports, so boxing, uh, health and fitness, things like that to disengage our youth in our community?
Yeah, so I would love that. Um, I was, and we can do that. Um, I would, and and you're right, particularly with the idea that I had. And example of idea that I had was the um internship. And now, it's not to say that it will stop there, um, but for people who were interested in public office. Um, uh, allowing an internship uh for the uh, for someone in our community to to um, from the council to do that. Uh, but that was just an example. So, so you're right, I was talking specifically to that, but only as an example of what we can do. I agree with you that it should be in, all encompassing. It's just where on the uh, where that lies on the the scale. But either way, if, if it precludes us as a legislative body from doing some things, because the budget is to, is supposed to be owned by the administration, I think that we can still volunteer our time and, and um, and do whatever we need to do and and check the administration side to make sure they are including funds for all the things that you used, that you said, boxing and um other stuff.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Yes, Councilman.
One thing, I mean, one thing that the, this council has done, that the, the council in the city of Glen Arden has done for many years, is we had, we've always had a summer youth program. And so we partner now with the principal of this county government, who will pay the summer youth and all we gotta do is provide a workspace. So we would have, uh, normally the clerk would handle that and spearhead that, the council clerk. And um, she would, you know, reach out to the library and the part, I mean, to the uh, the um Glen Arden Recreation Center and then also to the cit- I mean, to the departments in our office, in our building and see what openings they may have for like summer programs. So, I mean, that program is out there. I don't know, they didn't do it last year because of COVID and I don't know whether they're gonna do a modified version of it this year. But um, that is a program out there that um we do need to be aware of and we really need to reach out to them because it's a whole procedural thing to get them involved, to get our kids involved and let them know what's coming up. So that's something that needs to be looked into like sooner than later.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Harry. Councilman Jones?
Uh, yes, uh, that has already been looked into. The way the county set up that program this year, uh, they wanted uh uh, parents to um sign waivers and and things like that. And uh, one of the questions asked was if they were gonna be working in, in inside or outside? And if they were gonna be working inside, they, they weren't gonna provide us with a person. But Ms. Schultz, who is the human resource director for the city of Glen Arden, that uh task was given to her and she did all of the research and she has all of the, any information about the summer youth program. Like I said, because they, because of COVID, they wanted the people to be able to work not in close quarters. And if they did work in close quarters, a waiver from their parents would have to be signed saying that uh we wouldn't be responsible for uh any um any COVID i- issues. So, like I said, Ms. Schultz can, um, uh, because that is human resources that with that task was given to her and she's very aware of the program and what we had to do. And I don't think we're gonna take anybody, we're not, if I'm, remember correctly, we're not taking anybody uh this year.
I don't know if anybody else is experiencing this, but my lights are flickering.
Yes, President Curtis, there's a tornado warning for nine forty five. Um, it's an emergency alert that came through and it's saying that we uh need to take shelter.
It's picking up out there now.
All right, well, you know, thank you, everybody. Uh, we will end it here. I know that we didn't talk about the twenty twenty one constant yield tax rate certification. Uh, we could take that up later. Uh, Councilman Hairston?
I, I can just let my own, my question go past right now, since we was about to close out the meeting. It's all good.
Okay, all right. Um, and if any citizen has questions, um, feel free to, to email us. Um, Ms. uh, Councilman Hairston, if, if you, you know, wanted to email me your question, that's fine. I can uh address it. If it was to me or to anybody on a council, you could just send it to, to the council, we can respond.
Thanks.
Councilman Jones?
I just had one issue that I wanted to make clarity on to the citizens. We, we did not take a vote in this meeting. This is a work session. We just did a consensus to find out the pleasure of the council, cause I saw that in the chat and I just wanted to correct that before we went out.
Yes, yeah, we cannot make any uh votes in a special.
We just did a consensus.
Yeah, so just to quickly, so all the uh, the adjustments we made to the budget, uh, we will put the budget online for people to view it. Uh, we can have it up there for um specified period of time. Um, so that you can actually see what the, the work that was done. And then we have a public hearing, so you can comment on it, uh, and then we will vote on it.
Mr. President, one question before we go. So you're skipping over the constant yield and that really needs to be discussed because that does, that, that decides whether we accept seventy seven thousand dollars or not. If we're gonna roll the tax rate back, we're gonna lose seventy seven thousand dollars, but yet we're talking about new positions and uh, retirement funds and all this other stuff. So that need, that really does need to be discussed if they really wanna do that. Because if we, if we roll it back, we're gonna lose seventy seven thousand dollars that's gonna go to the county, so.
Okay.
But that's something that needs to be discussed later. We can do it later if you want to, so before we advertise it at least.
We can, we could take it up now. I would just advise all of our citizens that if you're not in a safe space, you should get in a safe space. Um, and if you wanna take it up quickly, I'm fine with that.
I mean, I mean, that, that was just my concern. I mean, to roll it back to thirty four cents versus the thirty five, the city loses um seventy seven thousand dollars from assess, tax assessments. Um, and that's something we need to look at because if we don't take it, the county's gonna take it unless we fill out the proper paperwork, which I know is not gonna happen to do uh for the tax differential, so the citizens can get their money back. So I'm just saying, with all of these increases in, in positions and we've done thrown, what, an extra couple of hun- couple of thou- couple of thousand dollars into the council's conference of training and some other line items. But yeah, we're gonna roll the tax rate back. I mean, I'm not understanding the logic in that. I can see if, if it was.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate that. There, there is uh, my lights are flickering and we could take, we can call another special meeting to conduct that. But the, the safety of everybody is, is takes precedence over that, so. Uh, we're going to at nine twenty three, take a, a journalist meeting and just look out for another um special meeting to talk about that. It won't be long. All right, everybody, good, uh, Councilman Harry, any good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Councilman Hairston?
I'm good.
Councilman Jones? Councilman Fareed? And Councilwoman Ferguson?
I'm good.
Everybody stay safe, uh, and we will see you at the next meeting. This means enjoy.
Bye, bye.
Good night.
Good night.